Today's Board of Commissioners regular meeting this Tuesday, May 27, 2025. Today, in lieu of invocation, we will have a moment of silence. That will be followed by the pledge brought by firefighter Matthew Larch of Station 10. For those of you who are willing, please join me in our moment of silence. Thank you. Please stand for our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and our meeting is now called to order. We have some movement in our agenda this evening. We are going to begin with our presentation number three today. And that will be to recognize Mr. Charlie Duncan. Mr. Charlie, are you here with us? May you please join Commissioner Burrell up front so that we may honor you.
Faster than everybody else. So, we are here today. I'm just so excited. I'm just excited for Charlie. This man has seen it all, been through hell and back. He's a World War II vet, U.S. Army. He is 106 years old today, today. Very outstanding. So, I'm going to read a proclamation from the Board of Commissioners. And then we have a couple of other presentations that we'd like to give you tonight. Whereas Charlie Duncan is being recognized for his remarkable longevity, unwavering love of life, and his enduring contributions to the Cobb County community. At 106 years old, he has touched countless lives, served his country with honor, and remains an inspiration to all who know him. And whereas born on May 27, 1919, Charlie Duncan has spent most of his life in and around Cobb County. He attended the 7th District Agricultural and Mechanical School, now known as McKeachran High School. Charlie, I didn't know that either. Charlie was married to his first wife Geneva for 39 years, with whom he had two children. And after her passing, he married Mary, and they shared 44 years together until her passing. He's a proud patriarch of a large family that includes 10 grandchildren and 20 great-grandchildren. Whereas Charlie Duncan served his country in World War II as a member of the U.S. Corps of Army Engineers, where he built and delivered prefabricated bridges to the front lines. After completing 18 months of military service, he returned home to his family and resumed his career as a master craftsman at Randall Brothers Mill Works in Atlanta, retiring after 37 years. He also owned a grocery store and personally built a home on 25 acres of land on Ebenezer Road. Whereas Charlie credits his long life to staying active, eating healthy, and he enjoyed square dancing for 37 years and water aerobics classes at Mountain View Aquatic Center, which kept him mentally and physically agile. In July of 2023, he was honored as the Grand Marshal of the Marietta Let Freedom Ring Parade. Now therefore, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners proudly recognize and honor Charlie Duncan for his extraordinary life, service, and contributions to his community and nation. We hereby proclaim May 27, 2025, as Charlie Duncan Day in Cobb County. And in celebration of his 106th birthday, with heartfelt congratulations and best wishes for continued health and happiness in the years to come. This is the 27th day of May 2025. And also with Charlie is his daughter Selena and her husband Sam. Our Vietnam vets Roy Lance and Donna Rowe. And Alex White is here to deliver something from Senator Ossoff. So you want to do that?
I'm here on behalf of Senator Ossoff to deliver a letter from the Senator congratulating you on 106 years and wishing you the best. As well as a certificate from the Senator. And I'll read it here. That's the letter from the Senator. And then I've got a certificate, a U.S. Senate recognition from U.S. Senator John Ossoff, presented to Corporal Charlie Duncan for your exemplary service and dedication as an outstanding military service member, embodying the highest values of leadership, sacrifice, and in recognition of your outstanding contributions to the community and to the state of Georgia. So here you are.
And here's another flag that was flown over the Capitol in Washington, D.C. for you. And then Charlie's family had a little gathering Sunday for his pre-birthday. And Congressman Rich McCormick's office, Ron Goodbub, his rep, presented you with a letter, a certificate, and a flag too, that flew over the Capitol. So, do you want to say a few words, Charlie?
Just want to thank everybody for coming out and thank the Lord for my good health.
Isn't it amazing?
No, I just, thank you, Joanne. See, I line dance at the senior center, and I told the ladies today, I said, "All you have to do is live to be 106 and be in pretty good health, and then you get all these accolades."
And I have to share something with you all. Charlie told me a joke yesterday. And in 24 years I've known him, he's told me a lot of jokes, but this is the only one I can repeat. Charlie grew up in Hickory Flat, and he said that Roy, there's this old lady in Hickory Flat, this good old country girl, went to the druggist to get a box of Kotex and said to the pharmacist, "I need a box Kotex." And the pharmacist said, "Well, what strength do you need?" And she said, "Strength? What are you talking about?" And pharmacist said, "Well, it depends on the flow." And she said, "Well, I got a linoleum flow. Work with me."
You're not telling jokes!
Yeah, put your cap on, Charlie. That's perfect.
All right, here we go. Jokes aside, here we go. Gotcha, thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you, Joanne.
And many more. We'll see you next year, Charlie.
I lost my place. All right, we will now have those who are here as a part of Senior Services Meal on Wheels program, please join Commissioner Gamble up front.
And we're also going to have our Parks Department join us.
If anyone's looking for seats, there are some available up front.
Where's Jatton? Great, okay. So this all started about a year and a half ago between Dr. Jatton Gibson and I, where we challenged each other to a pickleball game and raised funds for our Senior Services Meals on Wheels. We did it last year and raised money, and thanks to the enthusiasm of our Parks Director along with Senior Services and our staff, we were able to host another pickleball challenge this past May to raise funds for Meals on Wheels. And it's a great pleasure that I get to present Senior Services with a check for $3,175. Thank you to all of our staff who came out and played and then also donated to this. This will help feed, if I remember correctly, about 25 seniors for a month, and that is five meals a week.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Gamble, first and foremost, for this. I know that this initiative, as you said, started with you and Dr. Gibson, and we are very grateful for that. In Senior Services... In Senior Services, the meals that we provide, we have about two hundred seniors now that we deliver meals to. And this is such an invaluable service. I want to thank you also for coming with us to deliver meals and for the other commissioners who have done that. And open invitation for you, Commissioner Allen, to join us to do that. And you saw firsthand what it means to them to have access to this food. So we really do appreciate it. I also want to say thank you to the Senior Services staff, but thank you to Parks. Because without them, you know, this couldn't happen. They kept up with the scores, which is more than I could do because I would have mixed it all up. They provided the space at Jim Miller to have it and host it. And we grateful, we are grateful to you for that. Now, before I end, I do have an award myself. I'm going to switch spots with you. This award is for most money raised and it actually goes to Commissioner Gamble. We thank you for that.
Well, again, thank you. It's a pleasure to support you, not only for Meals on Wheels, but Senior Services and Parks. Again, you guys rocked it out. And it's my understanding this might be happening in August, so to the rest of my fellow commissioners, we do give lessons.
Thank you so much. And if you get to be a hundred, you don't have to get to be a hundred and six, but you can join Senior Services so that you can get to that and be healthy and active and wonderful. All right, our next presentation will be to recognize Blake Hodges and Jace Montgomery in honor of them achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. Please join Commissioner Allen up front and your guest with you can accompany you as well.
Good-looking group. So glad to have you guys here tonight. And to you two young men, congratulations for such an honor and achievement of commitment and excellence. So I really do commend both of you for finishing the process. The first certificate is going to be to Blake. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners commands you for your leadership and dedication to animal welfare. Your Bunny Bridge Brigade service project has significantly enhanced the safety and well-being of both the animals and volunteers at the Georgia House Rabbit Society. Through your hard work and service, you have earned the prestigious Eagle Scout rank at the Turner Chapel AME Chapter, showcasing your leadership and unwavering commitment to making a difference. So Blake, we thank you for the positive impact you have made in our community and wish you well. And to Jace Montgomery. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners commands you for your leadership and dedication to preserving the Kennesaw Mountain National Battlefield Park. Your Trail Fencing Rebuild Service Project has significantly improved the safety and experience of visitors to the park. Through your hard work and service, you have earned the prestigious Eagle Scout rank at the Turner Chapel AME Chapter, showcasing your leadership and unwavering commitment to making a difference. We thank you, Jace, for your positive impact to our community and wish you well. Thank you. And thank all of you for supporting them as well. Slide in so we can.
Yeah, you in the center.
You too. Oh, me in the center? Which one? There we go.
Alrighty, next up, we'd love to see Keela Lee, Rakia Lee, Kamaya Lee, and Kalea Lee in recognition of their extraordinary academic accomplishment this year together at Georgia State University.
Hello, hello, ladies. How are you guys?
I'm sorry, Chair, do you know them? Now, this is incredible. What an incredible story. Ms. Keela Lee, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulate you on earning your Master of Arts in Teaching with a Concentration in Secondary Education from Georgia State University. In a remarkable celebration of academic achievement, you joined your daughters in graduating the same day. Through your perseverance and passion for learning, you have inspired your community and your daughters. We are confident that you will continue to shape and inspire the minds of future generations. This the twenty-seventh day of May, 2025. And each of these ladies have a different discipline, so I'm just going to read through each of the certificates. Rakia, Rakia, okay, Rakia. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates you on earning your Master of Public Administration from Georgia State University. In a remarkable celebration of academic achievement, you joined your mother and sisters in graduating on the same day. Your commitments to public service and policy will have a lasting impact on our community and beyond. We applaud your achievements and look forward to the positive change you will continue to bring to this world. This the twenty-seventh day of May, 2025. Ms. Kamaya Lee, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulate you on earning your Bachelor of Science in Biology from Georgia State University. In a remarkable celebration of academic achievement, you joined your mothers and your mother and sisters in graduating on the same day. Your dedication to the field of medicine and your commitment to pursuing medical school are truly inspiring. We applaud your achievements and look forward to seeing you make the difference, the difference that you will make in your community. This the twenty-seventh day of May, 2025. And finally, Ms. Kalea Lee, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulate you on earning your Bachelor of Science in Biology from Georgia State University. In a remarkable celebration of academic achievement, you joined your mother and sisters in graduating on the same day. Your dedication to animal health and commitment to becoming a veterinarian are truly inspiring. We applaud your achievements and look forward to the contributions you will make to veterinary medicine. This the twenty-seventh day of May, 2025. Let's give it up! That is remarkable.
First, I'd like to thank you for allowing us to be here and have this time with you guys and this acknowledgement. I want to give to my daughters, I'm very proud of them. And what they were able to do, they inspire me and motivate me as well. So I want to thank you for allowing us this moment and for all that's in our village. My husband, who's out in the audience. And also, my husband's right there. Come on, Dad. Also, a close friend of mine, Fay Simmons, in the audience, who has motivated me and inspired me and given me words of encouragement and prayer during this time. I want to say thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Oh my goodness, today is what it's all about, just celebrating here in Cobb County the accomplishments of our citizens, both young and less young. We'll have our last cohort come up here. Those of you who have graduated with the Cobb County Youth Commission, please join me up front. Just for convenience, any parents who are here, please feel free to come up front. You can take a picture of your young people together. Oh, yes. Come on up, parents. Over the past year, we've had the pleasure of having a number of young people across the county take part in the Cobb County Youth Commission, where they had opportunity to learn about different functions of county government. They've also learned how they can step up and be civic leaders and take these skills with them, whether they're avid citizens of our county or whether or not they choose to go into public service as a professional. We know that they learned a lot from our staff here. And I want to thank all of you for your commitment to the program, just for shining so brightly as our future of our county. And I certainly want to thank our parents for nurturing these children. I'm so excited about what our future has in store based on their participation. So with that, I'm going to read one certificate and then we're going to pass these out to our students. Students, congratulations on your graduation from the 2024 to 2025 class of the Cobb Youth Commission. We look forward to your continued participation in community affairs and ongoing excellence in the future. This the twenty-seventh day of May, 2025. All right, please congratulate our students. Going to run through these quickly. Andrew, where are you, Andrew? We'll give you your certificate. Congratulations. And Chloe. Congratulations. We had a more formal ceremony up front, so we're going through these quickly. Robbie. Reagan. Gavi. Joy. Congratulations. Isana. Congratulations. Haley. Lylee. Charles. Ms. Sanaya. Sanaya. Familia. Evelyn. Ty. Jack. Congratulations. Gabriella. Congratulations. Taylor. Noah. All right. Did I miss anyone? Are we good? Please congratulate this group of students. And we'll take a group photo. You can open up your certificates, go later.
Good job, this is the final test. All right, here we go.
Congratulations. Noah. Noah. That's our tone. Noah. He loves dogs too. That's the young, yes, yes. Guys, we did it.
All right, we'll wait a couple of minutes for those to clear the room and then we'll begin with our first public comment afterwards. Congratulations again to all of our awardees. All right, with that, I will turn things over to you, Bill, for our first public comment.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Excuse me, as the board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate to review the, some of the related meeting rules. First, please state your name and if you're speaking on behalf of an organization. All comments should be made to the commission as a body and addressed through the chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the board. Comments should not be slanderous. The board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to all the speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and be heard by treating each other with civility. Now, statements made during the public comments portion don't necessarily reflect the opinions of the board or the administration of Cobb Government. And there is a timer on the podium to keep track of your time. The first speaker is Jennifer Suska.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Suska. And special greeting to my new Commissioner, Allen. Chris Ragsdale recently maligned students and families living in apartments. Again, as a school counselor, I understand the challenges of transiency. That's not the issue. The issue is Ragsdale misrepresenting facts and insulting families he's supposed to serve. Wendy from East Cobb News recently called me one of Ragsdale's biggest critics. I take that as a challenge. I'll keep going until I am the biggest. Because I know how he operates, in ways that serve himself. Chris was never going to show up here to discuss zoning. Chairwoman Cupid could have sent him engraved RSVP cards for the next nine years, and he still would have declined them all. Now, he claims this commission and Chairwoman ignore him. That's a lie. Former school board member Sharice Davis pushed for collaboration with the BOC after receiving an email encouraging the same from Chairwoman Cupid. When this partnership was proposed, on the record, Chris said, no, it's not necessary, from Ms. Davis's public remarks. I would like to hear what my fellow board members and the superintendent have to say about developing a more intentional relationship with the county. I move that the board chair and superintendent take this on as an additional responsibility and work with the Board of Commissioners to develop an initial plan for collaboration that will be shared with the board at an upcoming board meeting. East Cobb News wrote, imagine Ragsdale and Cupid in a room together. That already happened, and it's why he holds a grudge. During COVID, when other superintendents came here asking for PPE and life-saving resources for us, Chris asked for funding for CTLS, a platform that teachers and parents hated. On the same day, his own teachers stood in this room begging you for masks and sanitizer, he asked for useless tech. That choice, those priorities were outrageous. And when Chairwoman Cupid called it out, he never let it go. Three Cobb teachers died of COVID that year, and some of us who worked in CCSD haven't ever let that go. This person. Instead of accountability, Chris spent years lashing out through interviews, superintendent remarks, and complaints about the Chairwoman, thinly veiled as alarms. I'm asking this board to schedule another meeting with the district and school board. Will Chris show? Doubtful. He didn't show up after a school shooting. Why would he now? But please send the invite anyway. I'd love to be proven wrong. Let's see if Chris is finally ready to do what Sharice Davis proposed, collaborate meaningfully with this commission to address student needs in Cobb. Otherwise, this isn't about policy. It's about Chris's ego getting bruised by a Chairwoman whose work ethic and integrity he'll never match. Thank you.
The next speaker is Samuel Foster.
Hi, Sam Foster with A Better Cobb. You know, today I was going to get up here and talk about a pedestrian death in town center. A man died, 67-year-old man named Reginald Williams. I won't be talking about that today. Instead, today, we're going to be talking about something a little bit more fun. Cobb County School District Superintendent Chris Ragsdale and his claims that the Board of Commissioners is approving too many apartments and it's causing student transiency. Fun. Let's examine the claims. Let's see if there's any data to back up what he's saying. When I heard the story, one of the first questions I asked was, is there a way to measure student transiency? It turns out there is. It's called a metric called student mobility. And that metric is tracked for every single school district and school within the state of Georgia. And when you go look at those numbers, which are released by the Governor's Office of Student Achievement, you find out that Cobb County is actually in line with the state average. Fulton County is at 18%. DeKalb County is at 25%. Cobb County is at 14.3%. And the state average is 13.5%. We used to be at 16.2% in 2012, when this board was under very different leadership. So whatever crisis we're having here in Cobb County, I can assure you it is not one to do with student transiency. Chris Ragsdale also made claims that Osborne High School's graduation rates were low because of student transiency. He claimed that if we remove the transient students from their graduation rates, the graduation rates would be much higher. Transiency has proven to be bad for schools, sure. And Osborne High School, their graduation rates are lower than the school district average. But let's look at the history of the school. Because in 2010, if you go look at their graduation rates from back then, they had a graduation rate of 43%. And now their graduation rate sits at 77%. That's a 34% increase. Their transiency rate, the student mobility rate, used to be sitting at around 34%. 33%, excuse me. And today, it sits at 20%. So these are hardly crisis numbers. But on top of that, this is a budding success story that we should be championing. But instead, we're engaging in some sort of political fight for something that it actually turns out is not happening. Because when you look at the 2023 ACS Census data, you find out that throughout the 2020s so far, we've been building less housing, less rental units, on average, than we have in the past few decades. So Chris Ragsdale's claims of runaway apartment approval causing student transiency, it's not true, it's false. We should instead be talking about housing instability, which has actually been proven to cause student transiency, instead of speculating if parents are moving their children around the county to try and get first-month free rent deals. We should be discussing how we can have less students facing eviction, how we can have less homeless students, and how we can bring the cost of housing down for everyone.
The next speaker is Joe. I can't read the rest of the name. Speaking on water. Sorry.
You might have to excuse me. I don't really know what I'm doing up here.
Can you just state your name for the record again?
Joe Floyd.
Joe Floyd.
End of January, I had no problem with my property at all. Left February 2nd for a month. I ride my property every day in the golf cart. Come back the first week in March. Carried my golf cart down there, sunk, slapped. Had to pull it out with a tractor. I said, well, I'll give it a couple of weeks, see what's going on. I kept noticing, noticing waters coming out of the whole bank, probably for a 40, 50-yard thing. So I waited two weeks. Called Cobb Water. They actually come out and tested positive for drinking water. Cobb Water did. Then calling another company to run. And it's just, and the detention pond behind me was dry as it could be. Since then, it's filling up backwards from water under the road. There's water under the road. It's a 15-foot pipe down under it. And the other smaller water pipes are up high. The water's actually going down in my property, coming up. And it's a major problem. And I'm getting no help from the county. And my question is to Ms. Shedfield, which one of you? Ms. Shedfield? Do you or someone from your department can come out and look at my property? Is that possible? I would like that to happen. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Stephen Swanson.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Happy Charlie Duncan Day. My name is Stephen Swanson, and I am a concerned citizen residing here in District 4 in Cobb County. First off, I'd like to say that the results for the Flint Hill Road water test must be made public to restore trust in the county. Fluoride and chlorine results, and it should not require a FOIA request, because we will fill one out. Second of all, Joe's treatment throughout this process has been atrocious. He has been told conflicting information and ignored by the departments he has reached out to. He was held at gunpoint by your police force. Joe's struggle highlights the struggle of many residents, especially disabled veterans, who are not tech-savvy enough to jump through all the fabricated hoops to get answers. Finally, if there is a naturally occurring spring under the 15-year-old water pipe that's under the road, is the county's plan just to let it, let the road collapse? You know, just to spring there? Now, switching gears, I find it very rich that citizens who don't live in Cobb County speak so confidently out against our schools. The fact of the matter is that the newly-built multifamily rental complexes do not pay their fair share of school taxes. The 30 acres off of Floyd Road, where the Elon Brookwood and Marlo Brookwood apartments are, have over 700 units combined, multifamily. And they pay a combined $450,000 in school taxes in 2024. That number boils down to just one teacher per 181 families. Make that make sense.
The next speaker is Brian Luffin.
Hello. My name is Brian Luffman. My wife, daughter, and I have lived in District 3 of Cobb County for two years now. My wife and I have a life goal to own a homestead one day soon and provide healthier and more natural options like honey and eggs to our local community. I would like us to review and revise Section 134-290, Backyard Chickens for Properties Under 2 Acres, which was approved by the Board of Commissioners on February 8, 2022. With your help, we can have this law updated at no cost to Cobb taxpayers by increasing the maximum ratio to backyard chickens per 5,000 square feet. Currently, the ordinance states a maximum of one backyard chicken per 5,000 square feet. Chickens are social animals and need a group to survive for temperature regulation and protection from predators. If one chicken gets sick or dies, a surviving chicken can have severe stress or behavioral issues due to loneliness, leading to suboptimal egg production. To put it simply, the best way to have a steady supply of eggs is to ensure that you have a happy, healthy flock. The ordinance in place, Section 134-290, helps keep noises, smells, and any nuisances reduced for neighbors. The ordinance also states that roosters are not allowed, which will keep noises down. We place our chicken coop 25 feet from all property lines, per the ordinance, which minimizes sounds and smells for all surrounding neighbors. My recommended amendment to the ordinance will align with other counties that neighbor Cobb. We are one of the only counties that severely limits the quantity of chickens allowed. Here are some of our neighboring counties' laws. Fulton, up to 75 chickens on property under 2 acres. Paulding County, up to five chickens. Atlanta City Limits, one chicken per 25 square feet with a maximum of 25 chickens. The American Pet Products Association estimates that 12 million people in the U.S. own backyard chickens. And according to the USDA, 98.6% of the country's egg supply comes from just over 44,000 commercial poultry farms, meaning there are 3,000 backyard chicken farms for every 11 commercial farms. I believe that backyard chicken owners are in the unique position to band together at the local level and relieve our reliance on commercial farms for daily products. Yet with current restrictions locally here in Cobb County, where our output is severely limited by Section 134-290. In conclusion, I am requesting an amendment to increase the chickens allowed per 5,000 square feet to three chickens so that we can have a happy, healthy flock. My family and I are committed to responsible chicken keeping and are eager to work with the Board of Commissioners to update this ordinance for the benefit of all present and future backyard chicken owners. Thank you.
The next speaker is Christine Rosman.
Hello, Chairwoman and Commissioners, Christine Rosman. So I wanted to, as I emailed you earlier today, is request that you not reappoint Vice Chair Jennifer Mossbacher to the Board of Elections. I'm sure she's a lovely person. I go to a lot of Board of Election meetings. I've said hello to her. People have said, oh, she walked by, doesn't say hello, and rolls her eyes. So I don't know where that, a lot of integrity goes there. And I know that she just recently got some award from you, from your Keep It in Cobb, or not Keep It in Cobb, All In Cobb, which is like all in with the ARC. And anyway, I have questions about her. Because I have been to meetings where citizens come up and say, hey, I have investigated. I have plenty of people on these voter rolls that shouldn't be here. And the contempt that she has, the arrogance that she has, there's no integrity there, okay? So, and she's your appointee. None of these other commissioners have any input on that. And she's your sole employee, and she is actually an embarrassment. And so the fact that I don't even know why she's Vice Chair, she doesn't say anything. She keeps there, she just looks at her notes or whatever. She rarely even comments on things. There was only one time that she got real fired up. And then she popped out of that seat like a pop tart. Other than that... Yeah. Because they called my friend, a nice Democrat called my friend. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
So anyway, thanks, Minnie.
Anyway. Let's not have dialogue going back and forth when we have a public speaker, please. I'm sorry.
So anyway, I do hope that you will reconsider. Because the caliber is, Tori Silas, she's outstanding. She is an outstanding chair. Other Commissioner, or I'm sorry, other representatives, Debbie Fisher, doing an outstanding job. I think that you really need to reconsider that of having her as part of that. And I know it's always like, oh, we're not in charge of the Board of Elections. You know, that's out of our purview. We can't discuss that. You do have some impact on there. You do have a choice to make. Thank you.
The next public speaker is Hugh Norris.
Good evening, Board. Hugh Norris here, 28-year resident of Cobb County. I hope you all had a moving Memorial Day. I was able to play in a concert band at the Alpharetta City Hall, where we had moving speeches by select dignitaries. And all there gave respect to the fallen who gave their lives for our country. Part of the ceremony also involved the, quote, "presentation of the colors," end quote, where all attendees rose, either saluted or put their hand over their heart as a respect. As a Vietnam veteran, I well understanding the meaning of this ceremony. So when I find that the Cobb County Board of Elections and voter registration member Jennifer Mossbacher is to have her term renewed for another period, I started asking myself some very serious questions. Why, you ask? It's simple. Member Mossberger remains planted in her seat, working on her computer, while the rest of the board rises and states the pledge of allegiance with a hand over the heart at each of the board meetings. And recall, the pledge is a patriotic oath of loyalty to both the flag of the United States and for the republic for which it stands. Now, also note, Ms. Mossberger is a member of a very important board. That board is involved with counting accuracy and integrity of our voting systems and election results. Does Ms. Mossberger have integrity? I certainly ask myself that question. Ms. Mossberger, as an individual, owes me no response. But the public servant, Ms. Mossberger, owes the citizens an explanation as why she defiantly remains planted in her chair. I have tried numerous times during the public comment meeting periods at that board to get to the bottom of this flaunting, outrageous behavior. The chair of that board, Ms. Tori Silas, refuses to get involved. Nor do the other board members appear to care. With the exception of Board Member Debbie Fisher, Member Fisher does care. And she played a key role in getting the pledge added to the normal agenda some time ago. So here's the question I... So here's the question I have asked myself. As Chair Cupid is the official who is responsible for appointing Member Mossberger, and as Chair Silas refuses to properly address Member Mossberger's despicable behavior, my question is this.
Mr. Norris, your time's up.
Are Chairs Cupid and Silas loyal to the United States?
Mr. Norris, time's up. Mr. Imkin?
Peter Imkin, a resident of Cobb County for the last 25 years. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Pledge of Allegiance has meaning. We must not forget the meaning of this pledge. The Pledge of Allegiance is a promise to respect, to support, and to be loyal to the United States of America, our country. It is a solemn oath of allegiance and fidelity to the United States. It is a pledge to support, honor, and be loyal to the United States of America, its Constitution, and its laws. I am also disgusted by the behavior of Ms. Mossbacher and her refusal to face the American flag and say the Pledge of Allegiance like all other members of the Board of Elections. By refusing to face our flag and refusing to say the Pledge of Allegiance, does this mean that Ms. Mossbacher is unwilling to support, honor, and be loyal to the United States of America, its Constitution, and its laws? If so, she should not be a member of the Cobb County Board of Elections. Chair Cupid, I have a great deal of respect for you, especially for the one minute of silence at the beginning of this meeting. Almost brought tears to my eyes. I also attended the Alpharetta ceremony for the Memorial Day yesterday where they played taps for those who lost their lives in support of this country and gave their lives for that purpose. Please do not reappoint Ms. Mossbacher to the Cobb County Board of Elections. Her refusal to say the pledge is a gross disrespect of the values, Constitution, freedoms, and way of life we all enjoy as citizens, and especially on this Memorial Day week. She shows gross disrespect of those who gave their lives that enable us to enjoy the values, Constitution, freedoms, and way of life...
Mr. Imkin, your time's up.
...we all enjoy.
The next speaker is Mindy Seager.
Mindy Seager, Cobb County resident. I had a few notes. First, I wanted to welcome my friend, Commissioner Eric Allen, to the board. I'm happy to see the dais full in Cobb County District 2 and its 200, approximately 200,000 residents having representation again on this board. And it's also Mental Health Awareness Month, and for those of you who don't know my friend Eric and the work that he did prior to him joining this great board, he's done a tremendous amount of work in that space, including getting us the parity that is needed to make sure that mental health care is provided in this state at a greater level than what it was prior, and we're thankful for your service and continued commitment to that. I had planned to talk about the invitation of our Chairwoman to Cobb County Schools at a board that meets just two miles down the road. I actually came that way here this evening and marked the distance. And I want to say what, you know, I was going to change what I was thinking about saying about that. Here's what I want to present to this board. Chairwoman, I would like to encourage you to continue, I can't talk tonight, continue to invite Cobb County Schools to engage. However, I also realize that some of the information that they seem to be just waking up to has been available to them through reports. I know I have through my efforts through Cobb County, East Cobb City Hood Opposition, I have the future land use map, so I have a four-by-four in my garage if anybody wants to borrow it. That information is not new. That information is available, and I would like to see this board continue to work and strive to work with that board that is just down the street, and I hope that cooperation comes back this way. If I have an opportunity to make it to a school board meeting soon, I will make that same invitation to them. However, with the minute that I have left and the things that have been spoken here before, including me being called out just recently for something I didn't even say, I am concerned that people, the cooperation between the boards, and I want to take this less than a minute than I have left to make an address some of the comments that were just made about someone that I consider a friend. Jennifer Mossbacher is the Vice Chair of the Board of Elections that meets in this room, and she is someone who is heads-down, gets the work done behind the scenes, and doesn't necessarily say very much when she sits on that dais. But the work that she does, day in and day out, the work that her family does, day in and day out for Cobb elections, that I have seen in person, including her husband, including her child, who have volunteered their time to make sure that equipment gets turned in on multiple election nights, I have been there with them, and I have seen their family's commitment to elections and integrity in this county and anywhere else where they can be helpful. Jennifer Mossbacher jumping out of her...
Your time is up.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Susie Clark.
Sorry joking with the chairman about Ohio State. Hopefully that didn't, it did take into my time. I want to welcome Mr. Allen, his first time here, and congratulations on your win. I was at the Board of School Board...
Ma'am, can you state your name for the record? I'm sorry if I missed it. May you state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, Susie Clark.
Thank you.
I was at the school board meeting where Mr. Ragsdale did call out the county. I thought his remarks were very despicable, but some of his remarks, but I went up, tried to get up to him and talked to him afterwards. He was immediately surrounded, they surrounded me, the police did, that I couldn't go near, and I wanted to thank the board for allowing me to come up after the meetings, that you are accessible and you do listen to your constituents. Hard time saying that. But anyways, I went up to Mr. Ragsdale afterwards and just to talk to him and tell him I appreciated his remarks up until he mentioned something. It was not about Cobb County, but it was anyway, and he looked at me with disdain and said, that was my opinion. And then I'm like, no. And anyways, then he proceeded to look at his watch and tell me with disdain on his face that he needed to go speak to his employee, and that made me furious. I was there. He is being paid tons of money. Every time the teachers get a raise, he gets a raise, as if he needs it. It was more important to talk, for him to talk to his employee, which he could do on any of his other time with, on the job, than to talk to me. And I will be addressing that with the school board at the next meeting, but, so I appreciate your willingness to talk, to be open to the taxpayers. I really appreciate it that you don't have police breathing down my back when I want to say a few words to you, and I really appreciate that. I know in the past I wanted to speak on, some people have a big resistance to change in Cobb County, but as we, as Atlanta continues to grow, which it will, Cobb County is going to grow, it's going to, traffic's going to get worse here, and we need to accept change, as in the old song...
Ms. Clark, your time's up. Chairwoman, that's the final speaker, the first portion of our public comment.
Thank you. That concludes our first public comment, Commissioners, and bear with me as I gather Okay, I just want to check in with our Commissioner, excuse me, with our clerk. I do have three non-agenda items, but want to confirm that they are to be added to the regular agenda, not consent. Okay. Right now, I'm not observing any changes to our consent agenda. Does that reflect what you have as well? Okay. So with that, Commissioners and the audience, we had the members on consent scrolling on the screen prior to the meeting. They will be scrolling on the screen towards the end of the meeting. Wanted to know if there were any comments or changes needed to the consent agenda. Okay, with that, I move that we approve the consent agenda and authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Burrell. I'm sorry, it's you, Gamble. I'll start with Burrell.
I'd like the clerk to record that I do not support Agenda Item Number 32.
Okay. Agenda Item 32. Yes, that's regarding contingency for my office.
Yes, and as I expressed at work session, I do not support Item Number 32.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? All right then, I'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0, recognizing both Commissioner Burrell and Gamble's Opposition to Agenda Item 32. That takes us to the regular agenda. All right, we'll start with our Department of Transportation.
Good evening. Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager Drew Wrestler with DOT, and we have seven items on the regular agenda for your consideration this evening. Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a Safe Streets for All Grant Program application to USDOT for implementation of the Multi-Corridor Safety Improvements Project, designate county staff as the authorized department representatives for all matters associated with the SS4A grant application, and authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Allen.
So moved.
Second. Are there any questions? We'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve an intergovernmental agreement with Paulding County for improvements along Georgia State Route 92.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved.
I'll second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed $324,101 for Little Willio Road at Johnson-Ferry Road, Project Number B 2444, authorize a corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrell.
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Just a big thank you to DOT, you and JD and everybody that worked on this. It's been a long time coming, and the residents in Hampton Lake are very appreciative and excited.
Absolutely, and a thank you to the state. This is from the supplemental element funding that comes from the state.
Thank you, Jerry.
All right. Are there any other comments? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Project Number B 2446, Task Order Number 2, to the 2022 Master Task Order Contract with NV5 Engineers and Consultants Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $238,648 for engineering design of Tricam Road at Yula Drive, Rocky Mountain Road, authorize a corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrell.
Motion to approve.
I'll second. Is there any discussion?
Just that we have had the public open house for the citizens to come and see the plans, and we also received several feedback forms with, you know, input from the neighbors, and so it's good to see this coming through, too.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number 1 to the Contract with Acceler Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $10,000 for drainage system repairs on Riverside Parkway, Project Number B 2221, authorize a corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just a quick question. So with this addition, do you know how much, how far is going to push the project back from completion?
I don't know offhand, but I'll provide that to you in a split second.
Okay, did I call the question? Okay. All right, I'll go ahead and call the question. I thought I did, and you asked a question. Yes. Okay, all right. I'll call the question again, even if I called it before. All right, the motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Change Orders Final to Contracts for Various Completed Projects in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvements Program Fund, 2022 SPOS Transportation Improvements Program Fund, and Water System Fund, a total net savings to the projects in the amount of $561,551.38. Authorize a corresponding budget and accounting transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And our final item this evening is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the revised budget and current schedule for the 2016 Transportation Improvements Program funded primarily by the 2016 Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions per the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvements Program budget and schedule attached to the agenda.
All right, so moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, bear with me again. We do have some non-agenda items up there. All right, Commissioners, I move that we add Non-Agenda Items 49, 50, and 51. 49 pertains to the Intergovernmental Agreement and Resolution pertaining to the Service Delivery And Agenda Item 50 pertains again to Intergovernmental Agreements between Cobb County and the City of Mableton. And Agenda Item 51 pertains to the Cobb County Six Flags Special Service District. With that, again, I'll make a motion that we add those three agenda items to the regular agenda.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? We'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0, and I'll turn things over to our county attorney to walk us through.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Agenda Item Number 49 is for the Board of Commissioners to approve an intergovernmental agreement and adopt a resolution for an amended service delivery strategy to commence on June 1, 2025, between Cobb County and the seven cities required to participate in the requirements of OCGA 367020, to authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents. documents and to effectuate the intent of this item.
All right, so moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Chairwoman, Agenda Item Number 50 is for the Board of Commissioners to approve several intergovernmental agreements between Cobb County and the City of Mapleton, which are part of the amended service delivery strategy, which will commence on June 1, 2025, between Cobb County and the seven cities required to participate in OCGA 367020, and authorize the chairwoman to execute in substantially the similar form the following IGAs regarding Animal Services, Department of Transportation, E-911, Fire, GIS, Regulated Businesses, Stormwater Management Services, Water and Sewer Services, and execute any further documents which need to complete to the intent of this item.
So moved. Second. Is there any further discussion? Call the question. Thank you.
Chairwoman, the last item is, which is basically what happens by operation of law, but we're just memorializing it by Item Number 51, which is to terminate the Cobb County Six Flags Special Service District effective June 1, which was when the city of Mapleton then becomes a fully fledged city. So that at that point in time, the territory that comprises the district lies wholly, at that point in time, lies wholly within the city of Mapleton, and authorize any necessary budget transaction, authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents to effectuate by operation of law what occurs.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Okay, I'll second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero. Thank you. I believe that ends our regular agenda and takes us to our second public comment.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Gary Munder. I currently live in District 3, but I've lived in Cobb County since 1978. Chairwoman Lisa Cupid, I'm asking you to not reappoint Jennifer Mossberger to the Vice Chair of the Cobb Elections, Cobb County Board of Elections and Registration. As a public official, it does not appear that she is all-in, as we're calling it, after she refuses to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance at the Board of Elections meetings. While it is her right to do this, it would be beneficial for her to explain the reason for why she does this, and it shows disrespect for our great country. Her recent award for integrity is questionable. If she is ensuring that the elections are fair, transparent, and accessible to all registered voters, why does she repeatedly find ways to not support cleaning the voter rolls? With thousands of inactive voters on our rolls, cleaning them is crucial to keeping our elections fair and open. As a poll worker for Cobb County, I am doing what I can to protect our right to vote. I would like for all Board of Elections and Registrations members to do the same. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ian Constantine.
Hello, my name is Ian Constantine. Mr. William Rowling, apologies for breaking decorum earlier. I also wanted to say, Commissioner Gamble, congratulations on the award. My mom used to do Meals on Wheels all the time with me, and it was a big part of my, I guess, it was my first thing that I did for civics. So it's really cool to see that Meals on Wheels is still doing all that is, doing all that it can. Really glad you guys are keeping that going. Commissioner Allen, Cupid, Sheffield, and of course, Bureau, pleasure to see you again. I would love to talk about the Cobb County School District and, you know, the commentary from last week. I guess I want to start by just saying that Jennifer and Sam have already covered a lot of it, a lot of the details of it. But I wanted to talk to the soul of Cobb County. I want to talk today about how we celebrated some Eagle Scouts, we celebrated some young academics, we celebrated some young volunteers. It's really awesome that Cobb County does such a good job supporting young people and students and kids. And I guess it just bothers me a lot that our guy here would be about how these students don't need housing, or how student transients is... What? I mean, again, Sam has covered it. Apologies, I am so tired today. I also want to talk about kids' safety. These kids are walking from these schools, they're biking from these schools, they're busing from these schools. And our streets aren't very safe, our sidewalks are not contiguous, our bike lanes are nonexistent. As much as I would also like to see these students housed, I also want to make sure that they're able to get to and from their schools safely. That's, like, vital. Otherwise, I mean, we lose a lot of kids in Cobb County, and we got to stop losing these kids. I also would like to just say that, I guess, I appreciate everything you guys do, and I hope that everybody here can agree that child safety is important and that education is important, and that no matter what the legislation looks like, that that is the spirit that guides us forward in this county, the spirit of trying to uplift our youth, the future of this county, and to make sure that we are doing everything we can for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Denny Wilson.
Good evening, Denny Wilson. And let me extend a welcome to Eric Allen. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners. Looking forward to working with you. Let me be clear. I am not speaking for the City of Mapleton officials. I am speaking as a taxpayer that resides in the City of Mapleton. So I want to speak to you tonight about the agreement that was made between Cobb County and the City of Mapleton. I went and took a look at Cobb County's budget, and the budget for this year has $103 million allocated to police. So if Mapleton is 10% of the county's population by your budget amount, then the amount that Mapleton should pay should be around $10 million. And it was just released by the media a few minutes ago that you guys came to an agreement of $9.5 million. It's in the paper right now, if you want to pull it, MDJ, if you want to pull it and look at it. So according to your budget, police services are paid pretty much out of the general fund. And the general fund constitutes about 69% of the property taxes. So this is what one of the constituents came up with. He said that even if all of the non-property tax general fund money was going to the city versus the county, that $10 million amount should be down to about $3.1 million. And if it's not all going to the city, so the actual county costs of policing in Mapleton should even be less than that. So the question is, what happens to the $8.6 mil paid by Mapleton taxpayers that's earmarked for services? The same services that we paid for with this $8.6 mil for the last however many years. Police and DOT services were also included in that $8.6 mil. So now you break it out, and the first amount you come up with was $22.4 million, $20 million for police and $2.4 million for DOT. Then you came down to $9.5 million. So I think that kind of lets us know right there that there's some double taxation going on. So we, as the citizen of Mapleton, request, we want to request a line item budget for all the services that are done across the county per commission district. And just let me know, Dr. McMorris, if I need to submit an open records request, because we don't have a problem doing that. But please let us see that, and then we can believe these numbers. I mean, that's not too much to ask you guys as taxpayers. Thank you.
Chairwoman, that's the last of the second portion of our public speakers.
Thank you, Bill. May I moment? Our next tab is the appointments tab, and I will begin with Commissioner Eric Allen.
Would like to announce the reappointment of Kim Swanson to the Board of Zoning Appeals, also to announce the appointment of David Anderson to the Planning Commission, to announce the reappointment of Daniel Madelon to the Neighborhood Safety Commission, and to announce the appointment of Natasha Bell, Decide, to the Neighborhood Safety Commission.
Thank you. And I believe, following your appointments, we have appointments by Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you, Chair. I make a motion to approve the reappointment of Carol Wiley to the Development Authority of Cobb County.
All right, I'll second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero. And then that will take me to my, I believe, my first appointment, which is to announce the appointment of Natalie Knight to the SPOS Citizen Oversight Committee. And then she will be replacing Matt Yarborough, who now works for the Council of Quality Growth, stepped down resultantly for that role. And my next announcement is to reappoint Jennifer Mossberger to the Board of Elections. And that concludes our appointments. We are now at the Commissioners' Public Address, and we will begin with Commissioner Gamble. Bear with us, we're having some technical difficulties.
I am not singing this. Here we go. So we are proud to celebrate the outstanding achievements of this year's graduates. Many are children of Cobb County employees, and some are Cobb County staff members themselves. Wishing all the graduates the very best as you begin your next chapter.
Very nice.
Thank you.
All right, we'll begin with Commissioner Allen.
I don't have a soundtrack, but, um, there you go. I want to invite everybody out on Saturday, June 7, to the Pace's Mill Palisades Ribbon Cutting. That ceremony will begin at 9:00 a.m., and then join us at 10:00 to noon for an unforgettable celebration of progress and breathtaking beauty of the Chattahoochee River. So please come out and join that event on Saturday, June 7. Also, tomorrow, the Senior Citizens Council will be hosting a patient advocacy event at Soul Mill Library. You can scan the QR code to register, and the event will be from 10:30 a.m. until noon. So come out, learn more about your rights as a patient and how to manage your health care. And it was already mentioned earlier, so I want to make sure I say it again, but May is Mental Health Awareness Month, so I want to remind us all that it is okay to not be okay. Take care of yourself and seek the help that you need.
Thank you. We'll now go to Commissioner Burrow.
Well, earlier today, we had a great recognition of 106-year-old Charlie Duncan. He is an amazing man. I'm just thrilled that we got to celebrate on his birthday. So thank you, Charlie, for your service. God bless you, and many more. Once again, this year, we are going to be having after-hours assistance with the Tax Assessor's Office. There's four locations. June 4, 6 to 8 p.m. at the East Cobb Library, June 10, 6 to 8 p.m. at the Mountain View Regional Library, June 18, 6 to 8 p.m. at Kemp Memorial Library, and June 24, 6 to 8 p.m. at the South Cobb Regional Library. This was a great success last year, and you bring your tax assessment bill to any of these centers where we have the open house, and you meet one-on-one with someone from the Tax Assessor's Office. It's very personal, because it's your tax assessment, and you can get assistance with that if you're interested in filing an appeal or paying your taxes. So it's very, it's very beneficial. And last but not least, an update on Superior Pets for Patriotic Bets. We are up to 261 adoptions. Through the generosity of our Spots or Superior Plumbing, and Jake Cunningham, and Cobb County Animal Services, we have adopted 261 dogs and cats to veterans. They're free of charge, they're fully bedded, and you can visit the shelter and take one home. Thank you.
All right, we'll now hear from Commissioner Sheffield.
Okay, thanks, Chair. After years of anticipation, the Milford Recreation Center officially opened on May 17, delivering on a long-awaited promise to the residents in the Milford Osborn community. This beautiful facility is more than just a building, it is a symbol of progress and resilience. Amenities include a community meeting space with a serving kitchen, patio seating, aerobic and ballet suite, full and half-court basketball, which also serves as a pickleball court. Hopefully, Commissioner Gamble will have a new location for her competition. Also, it has fitness equipment and an indoor track. While funding was not available at this time for a pool, the center was designed with consideration for the future inclusion of a pool, ensuring that this site can continue to expand and meet the evolving needs of the community. A special thanks to all who were dedicated in this project, including Parks Director Michael Brantley and his staff, District 4 Park Appointees, Community Advocates John Williams and Alan Rody, and the then-Commissioner Cupid for including it on the 2016 SPOS Project List, and of course, to our County Manager, Dr. McMorris, and Dr. Gibson, who's also voted here. The center is located at 675 Smyrna Powder Springs Road in Marietta, next to Bernie Elementary School. District 4 is currently seeking dedicated constituents to serve as board appointees. This is a great opportunity for residents who are passionate about making a difference to get involved, share their expertise, and help shape the direction of our community and Cobb County. If you're interested in serving or would like to learn more, please email me at monique.shelfield@cobbcounty.org. And the reason you're emailing me and not Rwanda is because Rwanda is parting. But I want to extend my heartfelt appreciation to her, my dedicated Commissioner, did you write these? Because as I'm reading this, and you guys will kind of get the joke, as I'm reading this, okay, I want to extend my heartfelt appreciation to this, okay, I want to extend my heartfelt appreciation to Rwanda, Rwanda McIntosh, my dedicated commission assistant, whose last day with our office will be May 28th. Rwanda has been a true asset to both my team and the residents of District 4. Her professionalism, responsiveness, and unwavering commitment to serving our constituents have left a meaningful mark. Rwanda has carried out her role with excellence, grace, and compassion. Yeah, I don't remember this being the first draft. It's all good, it's all true, by the way, it's all true, by the way. She will be deeply missed as she spread her wings, and I know that I speak for many when I say we are grateful for her, for all that she's done during the time with us. And I also want to express my sincere gratitude to Michael Hughes for his service on the Cobb County Planning Commission Board. Michael has been a thoughtful and engaged representative, bringing a strong voice and balanced perspective to important planning and zoning discussions. He has been instrumental in my monthly in-the-zone community meetings, very helpful for the community. His contributions have helped ensure that the growth and development of our county are approached with both diligence and fairness. I thank him for his time, dedication, and commitment to our community. Michael's last planning hearing will be on June 3rd, as he dedicates his full attention to his new role as Community Development Director for the City of Mableton. I wish them both well in their next chapters. Thank you, Mr. McMorris.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheffield, and thank you, all of you, for being here today, sitting here, reflecting on the comments and all that's transpired since our last meeting. Commissioners, we've done a lot of work over the past couple of weeks. We've done a lot of hard work, but we've done a lot of good work, and I'm grateful to be here. We have a lot to be proud of in this county, and I hope that all of our graduates have a wonderful next phase of their life, and I wish them all the best. We have a lot to be grateful for when we consider Cobb County's future with everyone that's been before us here today. With that, again, thank you for tuning in. We are now adjourned.[1305.21]